Welcome to the August 7th City Council Meeting. I've called the meeting into order if you join me for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Zralowsky, roll call please.
Michelle Volk.
Here.
Luke Kellier.
Here.
John Bermal.
Here.
Dan Wolter.
Here.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
Okay, moving on to item number three, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for people here this evening to address the council for three minutes. And if you happen to be here for an item on the agenda, we typically allow for public interaction for agenda items, but if you had, raise your hand. Okay, so you're now moving on. Item number four, additional agenda information, Mr. Miller.
Nothing to nightmare.
Okay. Item number five A, Lakeville Baseball Association Presentation of Donation, and we have our Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Henin, I think, to kick this off.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. At the June work session, staff provided the Mayor and City Council with an update on the nine park projects that were approved as part of the November 2021 Park Bond Referendum. And one of those projects was the construction of Avonlea Park. Currently, we're touching up the final plans, master plans for the project, and we're moving into the creation of the plans and specifications. Plans, our plan is to go out for bid in January of next year, construct it all next year, and open up a lot of the facility then in 2025. So at this time, I'll just quickly highlight some of the amenities in the park that I shared with you at that work session. On the west side, you'll see 10 pickleball courts. As you progress to the east, you'll see five multi-purpose athletic decks for soccer, lacrosse, football. And on the furthest to the east, we're looking at putting in a cricket pitch and a cricket field. On the north, you'll see a future, you'll see a future skate park, and to the east of that, a playground, a splash pad, and then a pavilion for restrooms and open shelter. And as you recall, the splash pad, we have the Lakeville Lions donating $500,000 towards that splash pad. And then over here to the, just to the southeast, is the challenge course. The other amenity that's on the, on the plan is the baseball facility. So when the Park Bond, Park Bond Referendum was approved, Lakeville Baseball Association leaders reached out to staff and said, hey, when you, when you're starting to design that facility, we'd like to participate that because we might want to commit some dollars to take this facility to another level. And some of the upgrades that to be considered and that the LBA would like to see is a double, or excuse me, block dugouts with a metal roof versus just your standard chain-length fence with a metal roof. A double batting cage, which you can see right up here. Batter's eye out in center field. Integrated cover grandstand that would have your concessions, seating for 350 to 40, 350 to 400 people. Little storage area. A PA system. A dedicated field maintenance garage, which is just located just south of the double batting cage. And then a single-point entry as you enter the parking lot. So also, I'm going to share with you then a rendering of what this facility could look like. So up on top, you're looking at, you know, if you're walking from the parking lot, you'll see the restrooms when you first walk in. To the left would be your concession area and third baseline. To the right would be first baseline. The second rendering is if you're looking from like Pitcher's Mound along with the bottom rendering. So that gives you a real good depiction of where we're heading. Tonight, LBA Commissioner Thane Hathaway is with us along with some LBA directors to share with the Mayor and Council their donation commitment to this facility.
Very good. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, Council members. I have a check here I want to get to in a second, but I do want to give you all a little bit of background and a little introduction to LBA. I've been involved with LBA since like 2004. And, and the Commissioner, I think, for the last five years. And it, you know, so I'm going to give you some information that kind of gives you the scope of the program and what we do, and then we'll talk about this program. So first, I do want to introduce the, the board. So the LBA Board consists of 17 pure volunteers. Everything we do is volunteer. And these people put in tremendous amounts of time to promote baseball in Lakeville. So myself, the Commissioner, Finance Director, Bella Lipinski, Registration Information Director, Sarah Dreskowsky, Operations Director, Jim Ennaking, who's here today, Player and Coach Development Director, Zach Haiti, Miracle League Director, Kerry Schmitz, who's also here today, House Director, Sarah Hegberg, who's actually taking two roles as House Director and Community League Director, she's here today, Scheduling Director, Mike Orth, North Travel Director, Reed Schultz, South Travel Director, Mike Brill, Fields and Facilities Director, Ryan Kresel, who's here today, Volunteer Director, Jen Bolson, who's here today, Equipment Uniforms Director, Jennifer Frenzel, who's not here, North Senior Youth Director, Doug Stanton, and then we have a South Senior Youth Director and a Fundraising Director, the positions that are open right now. I say all that because it's, we run a program. We want, we actually run one of the largest youth baseball programs in the state here in Lakeville, and we're pretty proud of that. We run programs that start with, we run baseball, it starts with kindergarten in our rookie camp, which had over 100 players in it. Our in-house T-ball for kindergarteners has almost 20 teams, over 200 kids. Our in-house coach, coach slash kid pitch was our first and second grade, over 300 kids. Our travel program, which is kids that are nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, close to 400 kids in, in those programs. Community League, third through eighth, over 200 players. Senior Youth Program, these are 16, 17, 18, so we work with the high school programs and, and try to get the kids who play high school baseball to play in our, in our summer league program. Those are the Legion Programs, Junior Legion and Senior Legion Programs. Over 60 kids there, North and South, and then our Miracle League Program for handicapped players who are disabled players who, who want to play baseball, over 100 kids there. So it's a huge program, over 1,400 players total. We manage throughout the year, 280 coaches, 2,000 game, over 2,000 games hosted in the summer, seven tournaments and league playoffs and a jamboree, over 100 umpires. We started a program a few years ago to kind of, to develop umpires again. We now have close to 100 umpires in Lakeville alone. We play on 48 fields at two major facilities, public facilities, the, or city facilities, the King Field and, and Quigley Field, plus a bunch of school district fields. Hundreds of volunteers, 1,500 burgers, 2,500 hot dogs, thousands of fans. So we have worked with, John, I think, I thought you were going to talk about some of the things that we've worked with in the past. You had that on a, I think, your next slide. Okay, so there's a number of things that we've worked on with the city of Lakeville and specifically the Parks Program with, or the Parks Department with John over the years, and including the lights at King and, and a list that John will go over, but. Let me bring that up.
Yep, right there.
Yeah, I can't read all that. So concessions and, and the restroom facility at Quigley, the shelter at Quigley, dugout construction, the mini golf at King Park, the Miracle League Field itself, kind of annual field reconstruction and maintenance projects, the irrigation system at Quigley Field, the lighting, all the lights that are at King Park, the fence toppers, storage garages, scoreboards, batting cages, all of that stuff. So we've helped, we've worked with the city to help get those facilities built, as well as we help maintain those through the course of the year. So we've had a very good working relationship with your Parks Department and with the city of Lakeville in general, and we want to continue that. So when we, as John mentioned, when we heard about this, this field, we were like, hey, we got some, we got some things we want to do. That referendum got passed, which is awesome, but we want to do more, right? So we, our, our goal through this is to, is to reinvigorate kind of amateur adult baseball in Lakeville. We do a great job with the youth, but right now, today, our youth, when they finish our programs, play, and they keep playing baseball, they play somewhere else. So we want to turn this field into something that, that I would actually like to see, like the, the gem, like the place to play adult amateur baseball in the South Metro. So with that, we've got a, we've got a donation. So our board got together, we, well, through some work with John, we, the board started reviewing options and, you know, some of the improvements we could make. And then we had our last board meeting, we approved a donation to help try to make that happen. So I have, you want to grab the other side of this? I have a million-dollar check that.
Big check.
That, yeah. That represents AB, LBA's commitment over 10 years to the, the construction of the, the improvements that we want to see at that Avonlea Field.
That's really exciting.
Yeah. Go ahead, take them back to you.
So maybe we can just come up here and take a little photo with everyone?
Yeah.
That would be awesome. Don't catch it.
Well, that is awesome. I mean, I'm really at a loss of words. I want to, I just want to, on behalf of the community, thank you for that contribution, and in particular, for all of the work and funds that you've committed to Lakeville Parks in general over the past, you know, 20-plus years. And, you know, King Park and others would not be the way they are without your commitment, so we appreciate that. Anybody else want to? Yeah, John?
I just want to say, years ago, as a former LBA Board Member, Level Director and Coach, aside from the money, and I want to echo what the Mayor said, just the commitment that you're all doing to make Lakeville really as high-class baseball environment is really appreciated because you are sacrificing a lot and doing a lot outside of your regular life and regular jobs and all of that, so greatly appreciated.
Joshua?
Yeah, two things came to mind. One is the commitment of the volunteers. I mean, my annual Zoom meeting with the reminder to be nice to referee or umpires and coaches is sometimes needed for some of our parents, but the other thing, though, is the aspiration for this field, I think, is a really unifying vision for a Lakeville team that's one Lakeville. And so, I don't know, I, I'm really excited about what that means for Lakeville as a community, not just baseball, but just us as a community and fans watching baseball within an adult league in the future. So thank you for this financial commitment. I think it's going to be amazing.
Just, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Well, so I'm not, I, I'm not a huge sports fan, but the one thing that I always wanted to do is go to a local baseball game, an adult baseball game. And so I'm really looking forward to this. I mean, I've kind of read some articles on some of the, how do I want to say, out-of-metro baseball teams, et cetera, and I know some of our students, after they graduate high school, have been playing for some of these other teams. And they would love to be here in Lakeville and represent Lakeville. So I am really looking forward to getting that hamburger or hot dog. Looking forward to watching some adults play here in the city and seeing some tournaments that way. Besides our, the only time I've seen the adults play is during Panaprog, so I'd love to see them play anytime on, on that field. And I'm just so grateful for your huge commitment to turn it into something even more awesome, so thank you.
Thanks for being visionaries. Appreciate it. All right, moving on to the exciting Public Works, oh, John, sorry.
I make one last comment. Is just, Thane was actually our co-chair of the Vote Yes Committee, too. He has a lot of time on his hands, I guess, but, but he's also, are you Commissioner on football as well? Yeah, so Thane does a lot. I just want to mention that.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the exciting Public Works Quarterly Report. Mr. Ome. He has, I'm sure he's going to spend money today and not give us money.
Sorry, I don't have a check.
Yeah, that's okay.
Right, evening, Mayor, City Council Members. This is the second quarter report for Public Works. I'd like to start off by just updating the council on a couple of county projects that we're working on. The 179th Street Project from Hayes over to Cedar Avenue, that project is on schedule now. And the contractor is working on the segment from Hayes over to, or the, the east or the western section from Hayes, the work ties into 179th Street and putting in storm sewer right now and some other utilities. And the traffic detour that's currently in place, that'll be out there until end of August now, we, we think. But the project is, again, on schedule, and we're anticipating the project to be fully complete or, and open by October 11th. The 185th Street Project is also going well. We have, really had good weather this summer for these projects to be on schedule or ahead of schedule. Contractor has, just last week, paved the roundabout at Highview Avenue and 185th Street, so this photo's looking west down to, down to Dodd. So, and you can see the new school here that's being constructed. The roundabout will be open prior to or on September 1st, that's the schedule, and the rest of 185th Street will be completed by mid, mid-October. The county is also planning on the Mill and Overly Project of Kenwood Trail from I-35 over to about 150th Street in Burnsville. This is, again, Mill and Overly Project. Kerbin Gutter is going to be replaced a little bit. There'll be some traffic control that's out there, and then some sidewalk and some trail improvements as well that will take place. Project is anticipated to start September 5th. The 100, 205th Street Project, that project's going fairly well, too. The roundabout at Antlers Park, the new access to Antlers Park is, was paved last week. So you can see the Kerbin Gutter and looking over to Lake Marion right now. The work on 205th Street, their contractor is working on the trail improvements at this time, and they're being delayed a little bit with moving some small utilities around. But hopefully by the end of this week, they'll be back at it. Project is anticipated to be completed, 205th will be open by September 1st. The street rehabilitation project for this year, the Mill and Overly Project that we would have been working on, that project is substantially completed. We paved our last streets last week in that project, and that was a good, successful project. We were under budget on that project. The street surfacing, resurface, or street surface seal project will be starting up in August, mid-August this year. We have identified 29 streets that should be surface sealed in residential streets. This is a sealer that penetrates the asphalt, seals, seals the road and tries to extend the life of the pavements. The Trail Gap Project, this is a project that was funded through the park referendum. This project is about 75% complete. Three out of the four project areas that's shown on the map here substantially complete or have restoration going, work going on them. The IPAVA, Highview Avenue Trail Segment, that's still under construction. There's some utilities that have to be moved there, but we're anticipating that project to be completed in September. Moving on to the Streets Division, Streets is busy working on tree removals yet this summer. We got some, so some pothole patching to go on, planning for the summer, and the Street Signs Replacement Program is still underway. We did help out with Panaprog this, this summer, and storm sewer improvements are ongoing as well. And we do, we're still mowing our ditches even though it has been dry out. Moving on to Utility Division, we are seeing uptick in water use for this year just because of the drier summer that we're having. So for the second quarter, we produced a little over 850 million gallons of water. It's a daily average of about 9.3 million gallons. Repainting of the Steve Maschad Water Tower is underway. The contractor did start removing the, or stripping off the old paint of the tower last week. And hopefully, we'll, we'll have the project completed by October 1st. And then Environmental Resources, Middle Creek Restoration Project will be, the last phase of this restoration project will be kicking off in August. This is a partnership with Vermillion River Watershed. We did receive a grant of $360,000 for the restoration of this channel. This is, this creek does contribute into the Vermillion impaired rivers, or trying to do as much as we can upstream to try to improve the water quality before it reaches the river. About 300, or 3,400 liter foot of embankment that will be restored under this project. We are also working on water conservation program, and we did receive almost $23,000 from the Met Council for water conservation improvements. So we've used that money to partner with HOAs throughout the community for audits and helping them cost share with smart controllers as well to try to reduce the monodirigation that they're using in their, in their turf. We also did some irrigation audits with the Police, Police Department Facility, City Hall, and then water treatment as well. Lake Treatment took place this summer. I'll just wrap that up. About 16.5 acres of Marion, Lake Marion, treated for curly leaf pond weed this year. We are actually seeing an improvement with water quality in that lake because of the amount of zebra mussels that we're seeing. So there is a little bit more vegetation that we're seeing in that lake. Over at Orchard Lake, we didn't treat that lake this year because that lake did not warrant any, any treatment, or seeing some good water quality improvements at that lake. And then Valley Lake Park is showing increase in plant life to, from, and we contribute that to some of the improvements that we've made over the years to try to improve the water quality at Valley Lake as well. So we're actually looking at, we're, we're talking to the DNR and see if we can enhance the fisheries at Valley Lake in the future as well because of the improvements that we're making. For MS4 permit, just an update on that, we did inspect over 725 of our storm sewer sumps this year. We got about 181 some structures to clean out yet, and then our staff did inspect 153 construction sites throughout the community, making sure that the erosion control is in place and working properly. And we did send staff, again, this year, to annual salt, smart salt training, just so they have, have the best knowledge, information, technology to try to reduce the monodissult usage that we have in the community during the winter months. Moving on to the Forestry Division, we are, the city has seen uptick in the EAB infestation throughout the community. So we're generally infested throughout the community now, so we're seeing a lot of decline in, in, and tree morbidity basically throughout the community now. So Forestry Department did do some windshield inspection on private properties and identified several residential, residential properties that had infested trees, and we're working with those properties on removing those trees. So we, there's, through that program, through that inspection, we, 261 trees have already been removed. 11 property owners had, took it upon themselves to inject and try to treat the trees, to try to save them. And eight property owners were talking to about special assessments to help, try to pay, help them pay or help them finance the removal of their ash trees on, on their private property. For EAB treatment, again, this year, we treated about 900 trees throughout the community within parks and right-ofways that we would like to save. We also offer that program to residents in about the same amount of trees that the city treats, residents have taken, taken up upon themselves to, to treat their own trees through this partnership. We are, we did have, we did send out postcards for oak wilt this year. We're seeing an uptick in stressing out of the oak trees throughout the community with the drier weather that we're having and potentially oak wilt. So we're going out and inspecting private oak trees and seeing if there's some issues out there that we can work with the property owners and try to address. City did receive two grants from the DNR last year to help with the EAB infestation. So we're using that money for removal of trees in our parks and our right-ofways. We planted 600, or 65 trees in Valley Lake Park, Charity View Park, and then on Kensington Boulevard as well this year. We removed 101 trees within our natural areas, and we planted the same amount this summer. And we actually did get some favorable bids this year for the removals and planting, so we have some money left through these grants. We're going to go out again for, remove additional trees this winter and replanting this, this fall and spring as well with that same money. And that's the update I have for Public Works.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ome. Any questions, comments? Joe?
Well, it's kind of a comment and a little bit of a question. So it was a learning thing for me to realize that we didn't just, we don't just paint the outside of a water tower. That we actually go inside and paint it on the inside. What happens on the inside? I mean, what kind of paint is in there, and then what happens over the years?
So it's a, it's a, it's a high epoxy paint, so it's a really strong durable paint that's in there. There's, I think there's like three or four layers of paint that we would put on there. So there's a base course, like a primer course, and there's like two other different courses of paint that we put on there. It's a, it's built up, so it's a very thick layer of paint, but that's, paint is necessary in the interior to make sure that the water inside the, the tank does not corrode the steel of the tank itself. So that's, it's necessary for just longevity of the, of the, of the tower as well. So we do inside and outside, but it's, you know, we try to get about 20 to 25 years worth of life of that, of that paint.
Oh, on the inside, too? And then I guess I thought it was to prevent some sort of bacteria, but I could be wrong on that. When I was reading the, the specs, maybe, for when we approved having that.
So it is, it is an inhibitor. It doesn't, it's not, it's not, the paint is not there for bacteria or viruses or anything, but it doesn't kill it, but it's just, it's more for preventative, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right, moving on to the Liquor Department Midyear Report with our Operations Director, Director, Tana Wolf. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I'd love to see an award. There we go. Thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight. Tonight, we have the midyear report for the Liquor Department. So, sales, from January to June, sales have increased by 5%, over 22 sales. They've totaled $10.5 million, and we are over our adaptive budget by about 5%. Our customer counts are up, and our sales per customers have increased as well. Our customer counts are up and our sales per customers have increased as well. The Emporium Room, um, through June thirty-first, we have made use of the Emporium Room for fifty percent of the available usage hours. This is a combination of rentals and our promotional events. As you can see, the first six months, we had seventy-six private rentals and we had twenty-six promotional events for our customers. On the right, you'll see the chart there. That is all of the promotional events that we held and you can see that we, um, exceeded sales by almost seventy per, seventy thousand dollars over our average sales. So they are a benefit. E-commerce. So e-commerce started out a little bit slow this year, a little slower than we expected. Um, we recently introduced our phone app and we're focusing our marketing strategy on promoting our app. And we have definitely seen an increase in usage in the last couple of weeks, um, with an increase in traffic with our app. So we're really excited about that. Um, partnerships in March, we had annual fundraiser for the area food shelves and we raised almost thirty thousand dollars for our food shelves. They also donated over three hundred pounds of food. And then July, we just completed our July fundraiser for the Lakeville Police Department, which brought in over thirty thousand dollars. And that's going to be for the purchase of an advanced thermal imaging camera. We also partnered with the Lakeville Public Safety Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce for their annual fundraisers. And we also partnered with the Lakeville Lions Club for Panaprog for beers, brats, and bingo, and the craft brew review. So accomplishments, we finally completed our Kenrick remodel. Um, we added some shelving, a reach-in cooler, aisle signs. We updated signage above the beer cooler and we also added a community wall similar to the Kia Cook mural. We also added a, uh, similar community wall to the Galaxy location and then Heritage will be next. So all of us will have a nice community wall in each of the stores. Um, accomplishments, we were awarded the top one hundred retailer in the United States by Beverage Dynamics Magazine again. There's our nice trophy. Um, this award recognizes retailers across the country that demonstrate innovation, excellent customer service, and superior beverage alcohol industry knowledge. And I was lucky enough to attend the National Retailers Conference in St. Louis this year to accept the award in person.
Cool.
Um, we also certified thirteen full-time staff members with the WSAT Level One Award in Wine. Um, this brings us another level of knowledge to improve our customer service. I have three employees left to certify that will be done in September and then all of our full-time staff will be certified. More accomplishments, Jesse Rogers, our spirits specialist, traveled to Los Angeles to take her Level Three WSAT in spirits exam. She also traveled to Kentucky to choose some exclusive bourbon barrels that will be exclusive to Lakeville. We're really excited about these. The picture on the right there is our barrel actually at Nob Creek in Kentucky. And we have a Four Roses barrel, which is tough to get, so we're really excited about that too. Accomplishments, we had some new hires. So we promoted internally Pat Randall to the Assistant Manager at Galaxy. We also internally promoted Lynn Tolstedt to the Assistant Manager at Kia Cook. And we hired an external candidate, Heather Steiger-Maling for an Assistant Manager at Kenrick. Full-time blood. Upcoming events, we have Taste of Lakeville coming up quickly on August seventeenth. Um, and then in November, we'll be doing our annual fundraiser benefiting the Lakeville Yellow Ribbon Program. And we have lots of promotional events happening in the Emporium Room. We have Battle of the Breweries Championship coming up. We have Minnesota Made Showcase, the Brew Club tastings coming up. We're having the Howl Halloween pet adoption again this year and Holiday Merry Melt Market. And we have another wine club tasting coming up, so busy in there. And now stand for questions.
Questions, comments? Congratulations on the award again. Awesome. Thank you for the update. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to item number six, the consent agenda. Any items you wanted to highlight, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few, um, recognitions of the donations that were already recognized tonight. Uh, six, E, um, is formal acceptance of their, of the X donations from our customers at Lakeville Liquors. Um, and that's again thirty thousand dollars. It's going to go toward the police department and their thermal cameras. And item six F is donations to the Park and Recreation Department, which includes the a hundred thousand dollars, the first installment from Lakeville Baseball Association toward their million-dollar pledge. And then item six N is another donation to the police department. This comes from the Center Point, um, Energy Program that we apply for annually toward, toward public safety, uh, features. And this is twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, that's going to go toward a drone program. And then one more, item six J is a revision to our hunting map and ordinance. This is something that we look at annually as new development comes online. Uh, we are amending the map, but we also are amending the distance that you need to be away from a structure to, to legally bow hunt in the city. It was two hundred feet and we recommended that go to three hundred feet.
Any items for council discussion? You seen that I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, all those in favor say aye. Aye, post. All right. Consent agenda is passed. Moving on to item seven, ordinance amending city code concerning the public use of cannabis and hemp. I think Mr. Miller is teeing up this issue for us.
I will take this, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, the council did review this at your work session, uh, last week. Uh, as many people know, uh, the Minnesota legislate, legislature this year did legalize the use and sale of cannabis. And while the sale of these products will not become legal until January of twenty twenty-five, the consumption and, and use largely became legal on August first. And the state legislation did prohibit the use of, um, these products in certain areas, but did leave it allowed, or did leave cities with some discretion about prohibiting those use on public locations. And so the ordinance before you tonight, uh, would prohibit the, the smoking of cannabis and hemp in public places, uh, parks, streets, sidewalks, namely. This ordinance is, um, mostly the same that you reviewed during your work session with the two exceptions. One, the references to edible products was removed as directed by the council. And then after further review with the city, or with the city attorney, we did include definitions of hemp just to align with state statute. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on the ordinance in front of us that's from council? Sure. Yeah, Councilman Reale.
Well, after our work session last week, I mean, I just, I was trying to figure out, um, or continue to consider what we're approving or what we're trying to prevent. And balancing the, the balancing act that comes with that between personal freedoms and, and what we should be as a government controlling and, and what are we trying to prevent for the sake of the community? And I, I see these two actions in, in different ways. And so, um, I just wanted to reiterate my, my support for the park, um, ordinance is different because of the primary use of that space for kids. And I just, I don't think that it's an appropriate place for drugs to be, um, of any sort. Um, and so that, I, I, I plan to support that. Um, and I think we, we move to, um, move that to a no smoking at all because some of the, um, complications with trying to enforce a policy based on any kind of smoking or a particular type of smoking, I think, would be very challenging. The other one, um, I'm not convinced that there's, there's a, going to be an issue at this point. Um, and I'm not comfortable with moving forward on an ordinance that prevents completely on public spaces, the use of, uh, cannabis at this point. And I, I don't know, I, as I continue to think about it, I, I would be more comfortable, I think, with a, a change to the public nuisance policy as a, as a way to support or allow our public, uh, an option to assist if there was a problem, either with a neighbor or, or something happening on public streets as opposed to an all-out ban on public spaces. Um, I know we did not necessarily go into that as an option last time we talked about this, but as I continue to, to think about it, I, I would be more comfortable moving in that direction than an all-out ban. But, um, I'm not sure if others had a change of mind or considered it further from our last discussion, but that's kind of where I landed since our, our work session.
Okay. Other conversation, comments? Joe?
Um, the only thing that I, Joshua does such a great job of articulating things, um, and me not so much. So I'll do my best, but, um, I, I find it to be a little restrictive in the fact that it's like we're anticipating a problem before it's a problem. And so I'm, and I mentioned this at our work session, but I'll, I'll just mention it here publicly that I'd like to take this more in baby steps only because it seems like every time we turn around every week, there's something different changed. And I'm, I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, that there's going to be some tweaks legislatively coming out of the next session maybe on this because they kind of left us all, all of this open-ended. Um, and, um, so at this point, I was hoping that we could just kind of, um, tailor it back a bit. I mean, I, I have received of, just a few emails and a few comments from the public, but they were, they're very confused on, they think that there won't be any smoking of anything on the sidewalk. So they're very confused about the two ordinances that we're going to have in front of us tonight and how those are interacting. Um, and I'm perfectly comfortable not having, um, smoking in the park, park. And we'll talk about the other issue when we get to the ordinance, but of anything with cannabis or, um, cigarettes and the actual shelters and, you know, on the park grounds, et cetera. So, um, I guess I was just hoping that maybe, and I'm sure probably not, but, you know, I'll probably, I'll be voting against this only because I would just really like to see us take this a little bit slower and not be overreactive, even though, um, it's always good to be proactive. But I'm just wondering if we're anticipating a problem that probably won't, in my mind, come to fruition, so.
Okay. Other comments? Councilman Burble?
Um, yeah, I thought about it a lot, uh, over the time too, and I, I, I still sit in the same place. Um, I think there's evidence from other places that have legalized marijuana that unless there's some kind of regulation put around how this is used in public, it can have a really detrimental effect on a community. And I think there's evidence of that. Um, so I think in terms of what's the problem we're trying to solve, I think it's more preventive than anything else. Um, I don't want to appear to be obstructive. It's like, uh, this is legal, people are going to use it. Um, whether you do or whether you don't, uh, really, really isn't something that, that I'm concerned with, but I am concerned about maintaining a community and the character of our community, uh, that will allow us to continue to have a vibrant downtown, continue to have vibrant parks and vibrant, uh, places everywhere. The thing about Lakeville at the stage we're in, uh, with the type of demographic we have, children are ubiquitous. They're everywhere. They're, it's, they're not just, they're everywhere. And, um, for me, as I'm thinking of a family, if you want to bring your family someplace, uh, and not, um, not have to smell the marijuana, uh, I, I, I can certainly support that for our community.
Okay. Any other comments? Yep. Councilmember Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think it's important to, to, to note that we're not relitigating the decision at the legislature to, um, uh, to legalize recreational marijuana, but we're, we're dealing with the, the cards, the hand that we're dealt here. Um, with that said, I, I would be remiss if I didn't point out, I think that the, the state law is clumsy. I think it was done in a non-transparent way. I think it changes every week what we think we can do and can't do. It seems to be, you get different stories from different authors of, of the various bills. Um, so I, I'm not pleased with that. Um, but I, I, I think the, um, slice of local control that was given, uh, in, in this bill, I think, um, gives us the prerogative to do this. And, um, I'm, I'm where I was at the work session as well. I think, um, this is absolutely a step that we have to take, uh, for the character of the community. I, I felt strongly then and then going on a national night out, my firm, uh, firm belief is, is firmer after seeing all of the, the, the number of kids in, in the community. And I just, uh, I think this is a safety precaution that we need to take at this point. Um, and so I'll be voting yes.
Okay. I'll just say, you know, for me, um, and I'll just reiterate some of my comments I made in the work session, but, you know, I think this really allows us, similar to last year, when we have the licensing for the low potency, it puts a framework in place related to education and compliance. And I think that's really important, uh, to have the tool, if you will, that if there's a situation that, um, you know, it gets out of hand and somebody's smoking in public, we have the ability to tell them, hey, you know, wait, it's, it's in our ordinance, so that's kind of the direction I'm going. And I think that, uh, our law enforcement partners are, feel the same. I'm not going to speak for them, but I think that, that, that certainly is the direction that would work for the city. So I will take a motion now and we can obviously have discussion after that as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Before making a motion, I just, something I forgot to mention, um, I want to compliment you in the last couple of weeks for, um, becoming, I think, the foremost expert on what this bill means for cities, uh, in our, in our local media sphere. I learned a lot listening to, um, listening to that. So, um, I, unless, I, I will, Mr. Mayor, move to approve an ordinance amending Title Five, Chapter Two of the Lakeville City Code concerning the public use of cannabis and hemp.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on, just the cannabis portion? There's a separate smoking portion for parks. Roll call, please.
Volk?
No.
Hellier?
Aye.
Burmal?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
No.
Okay. The motion prevails. We'll move on now to item number eight, uh, amending the city code concerning smoking in city parks. And again, I'll let Mr. Miller tee this up.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and council, this ordinance was also, uh, reviewed at your work session last week. Uh, our current ordinances do not relate or do not address smoking tobacco in parks, much less cannabis or anything else. Um, some cities have in the past, some cities haven't. It, um, but when this issue of cannabis came to, um, the forefront, I think the council decided it was best to look at these both at the same time. So we brought two ordinances before you. This text simply, um, prohibits smoking in general in city parks. Um, and the definition of smoking does include both nicotine, cannabis, hemp, and other plants. And it also talks about electronic delivery device or, or vaping. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions or comments related to this portion of the ordinances? Councilmember Volk?
Um, just a comment, um, to, for the public as to why I am voting no on this. Um, and that is only because I feel like that the parking lot, um, smoking in your own car in the parking lot of a park should be allowed as if it's a designated smoking area. Um, I feel as though, um, we're restricting the freedom, uh, from people to be able to, um, I know that there's very few more people that actually smoke cigarettes these days, but, um, and this is just for, um, on the tobacco. So, um, because it's already illegal to smoke in your car, um, from the state legislature with cannabis. But for the, um, tobacco, it is not illegal to, um, smoke in your car. And so I find that, um, while I'm in favor of not having it in the actual park around the kids, et cetera, um, I just find it to be, um, I feel like we're punishing people for their, um, what some people would consider, you know, um, not a good habit. So, um, that is the reason that I'll be voting no on this, only because of the fact that it's restrictive in the, as far as your personal property goes.
Other comments? Okay. I, I too struggle with that. I mean, I, I've, on the inside of motor vehicles, um, you know, and then I just, I, I think about interacting with somebody or there's some sort of complaint because you're inside your car with the windows down and it's like, you know, where do you draw the line? So I, you know, anyway, so I do appreciate that, but, um, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the ordinance. Yep, Joshua?
Move to approve an ordinance amending Title-
Move to approve an ordinance amending Title Seven, Chapter One of the Lakeville City Code concerning smoking in city parks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Okay, I'll take a roll call, please.
Hellier?
Aye.
Burma?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
No.
And the motion prevails. Moving on to items nine and ten unfinished, a new business council discussion, anything, anybody needed to? Okay. Our next two announcements, well, so let me just interrupt you. So Taste of Lakeville is before our next meeting, so I'll just put a plug in for Taste of Lakeville on August seventeenth. So visit, is it tasteoflakeville.com to buy tickets and to learn more information about that event. Our next regular city council meeting is August twenty-first here at City Hall. Our next worst session is August twenty-eighth at Public Works on the corner of one hundred and eighty-fifth and Ipana. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post or adjourn?